About scheduling your meetings for the budget.
Sure.
Done, it will be done, done Lisa.
Recording in progress.
Today is Wednesday, April tenth. We are at the representative town meeting. And we will start with the roll call. And I will pass it over to the town clerk.
Representative Adams?
Here.
Antipas?
He's resigned now?
Oh, yes, he is, sorry. Bailey? Burrell?
Here.
Casper?
Here.
Din Schimbrot? Dutton?
Yes.
Fetters? Fitzgerald? Fritchie?
Fitzgerald has joined online.
Oh, she did?
Yes.
Okay. Fritchie? Fox?
Here.
Gardner?
Here.
Gibbs?
Here. Online.
Thank you. Hanscom?
Here.
Herbert? Kayden?
Here.
Keep?
Here.
Luck? Massett?
Here.
McElroy?
Here.
Mead? Norman?
Here.
Aubrey?
Here.
Porella? Perry?
Here.
Kay Powers?
Here.
S. Powers?
Here.
Pulaski?
Here.
Robertson?
Here.
Omritz?
Here.
V.C. Williams? Watson?
Here.
Wells?
Here.
Whitney? I'm Watson.
Here.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. All right, we have twenty-four members present, so we can declare a quorum. Agenda item B, moment of silence and salute to the flag. And all please stand. Representative Pulaski, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Onto agenda item C, approval of minutes without any objections, additions, revisions, omissions. I will approve the minutes. Yes, Representative Gardner?
I just want to point out that Representative Wells' name is misspelled in several parts of the minutes. They forgot the second E.
Okay, make that known for the record. Any other items? Also, be of note, seven oh nine. We have, is it seven seventeen? What time is it here? If I get different numbers here.
Seven oh nine.
All right, seven oh nine, Representative Fritchie's here. We have twenty-five members present. Okay, item C is then approved for the minutes of the March thirteenth meeting. Next, agenda item D, public petitions. This is the portion of the RTM agenda where the RTM welcomes comments from the public. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or as directed. And if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be limited to matters pertinent to the town of Groton. The moderator or members through the moderator shall ask questions only in order to clarify the speaker's presentations. Responses may be given by the moderator or by the town manager. Individuals should state their name and address for the record over here. Do we have a list of?
Let's see.
Okay, no one signed up? I'll open it up for the public. If you could just state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Carrie Mastro and I live at one twenty-four Ivy Court.
Go ahead.
Hi, everybody. I am here because, as I'm sure a lot of you have heard, that there's been a multimillion dollar company that bought the property on Ivy Court. And about half of the tenants on the street have gotten letters to move out within thirty days. And we know this is legal, this is okay, because they're on a month-to-month. However, there's nowhere for these families of five and six to go in Groton. There is nowhere in Groton that is affordable, or even a three-bedroom anywhere in Groton. So, I've lived in Groton my whole entire life, born and raised. I have noticed a big change in Groton the past ten years. It's almost unrecognizable. I don't want to move out of Groton. I don't want to go to New London or Norwich. I don't want to go to Uncasville, I don't want to leave the state. But I feel like I'm being pushed out of Groton. Because there is nowhere for my family of five, and I have a dog, to go. So, I don't want us, I don't want my two boys and my one daughter sharing a bedroom. Because there's only two bedrooms in Groton. And we would be struggling. I'm married, me and my husband both have good jobs. We're not poor. But twenty-five hundred dollars, three thousand dollars a month for rent is crazy. It's just crazy. Yeah, we would love to buy a house. But we're not in a, we're not in a position where we can, unfortunately. There's rules and stipulations to get a mortgage. And if we did get approved, again, there's nowhere in Groton for us to buy. Because four hundred thousand dollars for a three-bedroom ranch is not going to be in my budget if I get approved for a mortgage. I don't want my kids to not go to Groton Public Schools. This is, Groton Public Schools is the only place they've ever known. It's the only place I've ever known. From the time I was in kindergarten until high school. I've only gone to Groton Public Schools. My kids have friends and it's, they're teachers. Every, you know, year, they create bonds. And moving them from, you know, from Groton to a different town is very, very scary. And it's devastating to a lot of children. I have a senior. And if we have to move in April, you know, it's a senior year, that's just not fair. I have an eighth grader who's going into high school next year, and he's huge with football. And he wants to go to Fitch for football. You know, all his friends are going to Fitch. I don't, I'm afraid if we move out of Groton and we have to go somewhere else, he's not going to want to play football because none of his friends are going to be there. I think the only, this is how I feel. The only place to live affordably in Groton is either Brantford Manor, or you got to move. That's how I feel. I don't, I don't, I don't want to live in Brantford Manor. I lived in Brantford Manor, I grew up in Brantford Manor. I got my children out of Brantford Manor. There's nothing, I have nothing against Brantford Manor. But it's, it's not a place, you know, where I want to raise, I want to raise my kids. But I don't, I don't, I'm not sure what to do. There's, there's just nowhere to go in Groton. It's either Brantford Manor, or, you know, there's, there's a lot of senior living in Groton. But nowhere for families. Nowhere for families. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Mastro. Are there any members that would like to speak?
My name is Greg Edwards, I live in eighty-six Ivy Court. I'm retired. But I speak, I've come to talk to the committee. There's a flaw, there's a flaw with the rent control, there's a flaw with the taxes, the system and everything. So, I'm not here talking about the landlord, I'm not here talking about the tenant. I'm talking about the town right now. I fell in love with this town back in the eighties. And I brought my special needs son, I brought my kids here and I made a living here. Groton is a nice little knit community. The same issues that you have right here with getting permits, private owners, people wealthy, coming from New York, all over. Buying up property here. Affordable house. People want space. You got four kids, five kids, two kids, you still want space. You don't be congregated and herded like sheeps and stuff. And what do you, black, brown, blue? Only thing that separates us is money. However, what separates us right now is taxes. You put in a new rental, you're going to raise the taxes. A new buyer come in, I'll bid someone else, you're going to raise the taxes. What that affect? The mill rig? What else that affect? The community? What else affect? Everybody that you live in here. So, if you want to force everybody out here and have the higher echelon, people live here. Everybody at EB doesn't have tassels around their necks, doesn't have electric degrees, engineers degrees. I'm passionate about this because I did thirty-three years in the military and I love this country. But I know how we get greed and getting hung up on money. And then you lose your whole community. Why build a new school if you got no bodies to put in it? Why build affordable houses when you want people just to live like ants and roaches and stuff? You can create the open space, you can create whatever you want. But if you don't have emotion tied to your job and your position and the care for the community that you have, you're going to lose it. And it's going to be just like decimated, just like in Tennessee, Louisiana, Florida. I don't even have to go that far. You can go to Norwich, you can go to New London. It's the same thing that's happening. And if you make a decision for the community as a whole, think about your own family when you're making that decision. Because it affect every family member here. And I'm not big into politics, but I'm big into people and emotion and feelings. And not big with, I don't care if you got one dollar, a million dollars, you're still that same person. But if you empty, you are empty. And if you filled with a spiritual thing and you care about this community, you hear the pain that's, and see it and feel it, not just on the GDP, not just on the inflation. You see it on the, on the daily life activity of these kids around here. You can build all the pickleball courts you want. You can play, you can pretend that this neighbor, that neighbor, we all together, but divided. I guarantee you Groton is going to fall, just like the rest of these towns around here. Taftville, Alcombe, all those other little towns. O-line. Again, my pitch is to the town, not mad, not angry. It's a decision that you make truly, truly, truly affect everybody bottom line and the way of facts of life of living. Whether you got a uniform on or not have a uniform on. So, that's my plea. Think about the decision that you make. Think about the people that you let buying up this space around here and coming in and decimated your own community. Whether it's a farm, whether it's a land or whatever. Because it's, like she, I'm not picking back on off her statement, but it's horrible. There's no other way to describe the feeling. And I'm looking at that flag. And thinking about your cemeteries around here. And I see every last one of you guys out here. And maybe not a lot of outpour from the community that attend these meetings or function. Maybe they don't have the time to come here and sit down and have the one-on-one conversation with you. Until it affect them, until that eggs, labor costs, Home Depot to put another roof on their house. Then they started looking at their tax assessment going up every year. Whether to remodel their home, because if they add more square footage, it's going to add more taxes. And we know we all have to pay our fair share of taxes, so I'm just not harping on taxes. I'm just harping on the decision. And what do you even think in the consideration of bedding these privatized, private investors into your community? Or you just accepting the dollar? Because bigger doesn't mean better all the time. And I've seen it, and I witness it. So, that's what I'm just wanting to say.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Ellis.
Could I ask a question? Sorry, Representative Dutton?
Yes, we're in the middle of public petitions right now?
I would just like more explanation from these two eloquent speakers about Ivy Court.
Yeah.
Like even more?
I understand and.
Okay. Because the last speaker you asked if I was allowed to ask a question.
Right now, I'm trying to leave it for the residents so that they can speak their voice. So, if there's any other members of the community that would like to speak during public petitions?
Good evening. My name is Louis Cruz, I live on sixty-four Ivy Court. I'm on just the other end of my neighbors. We're on the end where we're waiting to find out what's going to happen. I've contacted up reality, the ones who currently own us, about any possibility of signing a lease. They have no interest in it. I reached out to somebody because I just happened to notice my water bill was missing. They told me, oh, we're paying it. I have an email saying that, yeah, we take care of Ivy Courts and their water. Shortly after, I got a shut-off notice. I have never gotten a shut-off notice. I've always had a credit on my water bill. So, to get that in the mail, now it's me, my wife, my daughter, her grandmother, and her niece who lives with us. I met her in Paquannick Bridge. We've been together for twenty years, both growing up in Connecticut. And now these new landlords, they're pushing us out. Every time we talk to them, somebody gets a different story. Nobody gets a straight answer. Oh, you owe this money, you owe that money, you're paying this now. I get it, they're trying to make the most that they can. It's a business in a type of way. But it's not fair for my daughter to see her friends. Because you know, kids, they hear, they talk. She's hearing her friends have to leave. So, now she's going to bed every night wondering, what are we going to do? I'm going to bed trying to figure out, what am I going to do? Can I stay in Groton? Do I have to pick up and leave? Do I have to try and figure out how to get doctors situated down there? Our grandmother's got COPD. Why should we have to stress about where can we go to find another doctor that's going to take care of her? We are perfect, we're perfectly happy in Ivy Court. Everybody loves it. I've got people down the street where if my daughter's over there, I know she's safe. You really can't find that anywhere now. If she's sleeping over, I know they're going to treat her like they're one of our own. And they do. She gets McDonald's from time to time from their families and she loves it. She's building happy memories with these people, and I love it for her. And I would just love if something happened where we could just stay in Ivy Court. If we have to pay a little bit more, I'm pretty sure we wouldn't mind it. But we would at least like the option to. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there members of the public that would like to speak? All right, I'm going to close public petitions. I'm going to open up a reception and communications. Just for the record, we got notification from Representative Crockett Hubbard and Dean Schimbrot that they were not able to be here today. I would like to say to the members of our community who just came out and spoke, thank you for being here so that we can hear what's going on in our community. I can only speak for myself here, but I could, I could see that members here are moved by what's going on over there. Just to let you know, I've been in communication with our town manager, John Burr. And when we move on to our next agenda item, he's going to come up, give us some sort of communication as Representative Dutton was asking, as well as some actionable items for community members. Are there any other communications? Representative, we have a town council here who's an ex officio member, so I have to recognize her in this communications.
Thank you.
Can you please use the microphone?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I'd prefer to just speak as a citizen, but that was taken away, so here I am.
Excuse me, you're speaking at community, you don't have to add that extra stuff. The rules are the rules of the RTM.
Okay, you don't have to be rude to me.
Thank you.
I was just clarifying for people who didn't understand why I was speaking here. Can you not be rude? Can you show decorum?
I'm maintaining order, and if you can't hold the order, I can sit you down.
I rise. Decorum.
Thank you. You may continue.
Thank you. Thank you for that warm reception. I just want to speak as a town counselor. I've been directly talking with a lot of the residents. One of my son's friends is here today. And I, you know, have known him for many years through the music department. And it absolutely upsets my stomach to sleep at night to know that one of my sons, you know, twenty-twenty-four graduates is with him and is, you know, having to suffer and deal with these things in the midst of their senior year, as well as all the other residents. I just encourage the RTM, as it was stated, there's not much we can do to change the owner. There might be some things that legally they can do to help with the time. Because giving someone a thirty days notice when there's hard to find a house at all, no matter what income level you are in. But we as a community can stand with these folks and help them navigate the system. And that's something that I've said from day one that I will be doing. But what we have an obligation to do, I feel, after being elected and sitting on this body many years and up there is, since I've been here, we have not put any RFPs out that have had any affordable housing components in it. Yesterday at the town council meeting, I encourage everyone to watch, the RTM members that are concerned about Ivy Court. It was stated yesterday that we have twenty-three point something, don't quote me on the exact end of that, affordable housing, and that includes military barracks as well as military housing. And John Burr, correct me if I'm wrong, if you subtract the military housing out of that. And John Burt, correct me if I'm wrong, um, if you subtract the military housing out of that, they're calling it affordable, but the last I checked, to rent a place of military housing ranges from eighteen to twenty-three hundred dollars. If you subtract military housing out of it, we are left with ten point, was it eight, John? Percent? Ten point something percent?
It was real close. Yeah, I believe it was ten point eight.
Ten, ten point eight percent left of affordable housing. When I ask what percent of that is senior housing, which I'm all for as well, we need more of that, is what is left for women, families, husbands and wives with children? When you take that senior housing out of that ten point eight percent, that's not gonna be a lot left over. I'm waiting for the number to come back. We have a strong obligation here to do right. I think what we can do from this level and the way we help, we might not be able to change it, but what we do is send a strong message by saying, we need more affordable housing here. And ways that that can happen is be putting out RFPs where you allocate at least twenty or thirty percent of that housing has to be.
Excuse me, excuse me, uh, town counselor, excuse me. I've given you two minutes of leeway on this. This is for communications, reception of communications. If you'd like to speak on this issue, we have another agenda item for this, under other business, so.
Thank you.
Please, thank you.
So I'll just end with that. So that's the ways that we have to change. And since I've been on, all the RFPs we've put out have not had affordable housing in them. So, um, thank you, and I will keep talking later. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other reception of communications? All right, moving on, I'm gonna move to Agenda Item F, Report from the Town Manager. I'll turn it over to the Town Manager, Burt.
Good evening. Uh, first of all, certainly have my sympathy for the situation. What I'd say would probably be a little comfort, but we are doing what we can. I'll get to the, to that in just a second. Let me go through the financial report first. Uh, preliminary fund balance as of June thirtieth, twenty-three is we are at twenty-one point two percent of the general fund adopted budget. Uh, our target's twenty percent, so we're right around where we should be. Contingency, we start the year at, at beginning of the year with three hundred thousand. We are down to two hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred left. Fourth quarter transfers will be coming to the RTM soon though, so you'll see a change in that. And capital reserve fund, capital projects, we currently have three hundred and fifty-one thousand, um, in that fund balance. Uh, some other items, the town council discussed a potential changes to the town's blight ordinance last night. Uh, tentatively, there's, will be a public hearing at the June, June fourth regular town council meeting. Um, information to be distributed soon, more on that. Uh, budget is ongoing most night, any night I'm not here, or town council, it's budget time right now. So far, the town council, as through Monday night, between finding alternate revenue sources and, and doing cuts, have made about one point two five billion in changes. More to, to come. They're, uh, they're trying to make every adjustment that they can. I'll have some more detail in my email report later. Bless you. Um, in terms of evictions, uh, one sec here, let me pull up something. First, I just wanted to make sure people have some of the contact numbers. Uh, Kristine, Representative Christine Conley, um, had provided some contact numbers. Make sure you have legal aid. Um, if you go to Unite CT, uh, first of all, there's a desperate need for more housing of all levels, especially affordable in town. If you can find someplace, Unite CT, make, you're eligible for up to three thousand dollars for the first two months' rent total. Um, if you could find someplace. Fair Rent Commission, all the information's here. I put this on the front page of our website. It's on, uh, the town's, uh, Facebook. And I have some handouts with me too that have this information if you're here and want a handout on the information. But on top of that, last Friday, Representative Conley, Representative Bumgardner, Representative Summers, and myself met with, uh, Ms. Bascara Bruno, the Commissioner of Housing for Connecticut, just to discuss what options there are. Um, as I mentioned, that three thousand dollars. Now, if you go to the website, my understanding is it, it makes it sound like you have to already be evicted. The commissioner said they do that sort of to not get overflow, overblown with, uh, requests, so. But it, it actually is available before eviction. Um, and I'm not providing legal advice, but they said to pass on, do not just move out, make sure you get legal aid and, uh, and the, uh, until you get a final notice to quit, um, it wouldn't hurt your credit rating, but obviously not legal advice. Please call and make sure you have legal representation. They also discussed home down payment assistance through CHFA. Representative Conley, if you have any trouble with the website, um, for any help, she offered to, uh, let me find the number, she offered for her office to, to help with anything. Her phone number is, uh, let's see, oh, eight hundred eight four two eight two six seven. And, uh, anything I say or any information you want, you feel free to call my direct number, eight six zero four four one six six three three. Also email me at J B U R T at Groton dash C T dot gov. Um, they also discussed some, that there's extra protections for seniors and disabled, which you should explore that with legal counsel. Um, one thing, I'm, I sent something to the Town's Fair Rent Commission. Now, the way it works is if we get a complaint, rents being, um, what you consider overly escalated, you make a complaint to the, and it, of course, you know, this situation is much different. But just speaking about other options that, uh, you can make a complaint and they will hear it and decide whether to, uh, do something different with the rent. But one thing I've asked the Fair Rent Commission in New Haven, what they've started doing is a tenants' union can request that all the tenants in a apartment complex, that type of apartment complex can ask for a review. So I've asked the Fair Rent Commission to look at that ordinance to see if maybe it would make some sense here. And then if it does, we can make our town attorney available to give, uh, some, uh, meetings on how to form a tenants' union. Um, and then one thing I noticed, as we're looking through options, back in twenty-one, the, the state had looked at an option of things like, uh, rent caps, rent escalation. Now, you have to be careful because you don't want it, you know, harm development. However, some of those tools might be nice to have, so, um, something to discuss, that we'll be discussing with our legislators, but, um, just putting that on your radar. But again, please, uh, feel free to contact me. Feel free to contact either of our representatives, uh, Senator, and we'll do everything we can.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Burt, for that concise and prepared, um, strategy there. I got, is there anything that the Groton Housing Authority has available to remedy some of these situations?
Well, I mean, they have, I, I believe they have quite a waiting list. Uh, you know, it's worth checking to make sure, but I've always heard, I think we just heard in the last six, eight weeks that they still have a waiting list. They're, of course, getting ready to look at expanding, building more there. As Council Board alone mentioned, we have quite the extensive discussion last night on affordable housing. There's very few ways a town council, a town can affect affordable housing. One of the ways, though, is when we do have property like schools, is to encourage affordable housing, make that a requirement is at least a portion of that. So, uh, very much in favor of that, and I think the entire council was in favor of that. Doesn't help now, but it is something that we are working on, so.
Are there any other questions for the Town Manager? Council Board along?
Um, thank you. Uh, thanks to the Town Manager for putting that up online. That was one of the requests that I had sent to him to, you know, ask. And, um, can you speak a little bit to any funding that people are able to get through our Human Services Department? I know that we have some ARPA money over there still, or rent assistance, or any of those endowments that are there?
Sure. Um, the, well, the ARPA funds, now, the, the Town Received American Rescue Plan Act funds, um, which we have to allocate through the end of the year, we're down to the, to kind of the ending funds. The, uh, Human Services themselves are, as of today, down to about seven hundred and fifty dollars. However, tonight, the RTM is being asked to, uh, approve fifty thousand more to go into that fund. So if you have any kind of link you can prove to our, uh, to COVID, um, there are some funds available. However, they do have a couple other funds for things like, uh, utility assistance, rent assistance. They do have some other money. Now, in our budget, we have, we're trying to beef up that fund for the July budget. Um, again, it doesn't help now, but we are trying to build that fund up, and, uh, I encourage the RTM to support Human Services when we get to that part. TVCCA also has, um, both Human Services and TVCCA keeps listings of what apartments, what things are out there, so, you know, worth checking with both of them. And, uh, if you do have ideas for where, you know, I'd like to hear, you know, where you do need help, if you have ideas. Certainly willing to listen and see what we can do.
Uh, thank you. Um, is there any income guidelines for the ARPA funding? Um, that's one question that someone had asked, right? And the other thing was, um, is there any way, um, other towns, when there is a need like this, they decided to set aside, um, non-ARPA funds, like twenty thousand or ten thousand or whatever, the town wanted to allocate to help folks? Um, I know myself, uh, we have extra ARPA funds still sitting there, and I asked that instead of the fifty thousand that's coming before each night, I had tried to make a move for a hundred thousand, but I didn't get the support of fellow council members. A few did, but we couldn't move that. Um, and Marge, uh, Marge did say the funding would be needed. So, tonight, they could reject the fifty thousand and say that they'd like to see more money go into there, couldn't they?
They could, however, I, I would, uh, definitely, um, say not to do that, because then you have to wait the length of time you get anything. We're down to seven hundred and fifty dollars. You wanna get that fifty thousand in there now, it'd be very, uh, foolish not, honestly, to not do that. And then make the request, and I am supportive of doing more, so if we make the case, I'm sure the council seems very supportive.
So had we done it before, it would have been a hundred for them today. But they could make an email or a request saying that we should get moving on that, as I was trying to state. Um, and is there any other things we can do to help folks that may be over income? Because I guess some people have gone in to try to apply, but they're in critical need right now, trying to come up with three and four and five thousand dollars to move, when you're not budgeting for that in thirty days. So what other things can we do legally as a town to try to, we wanna retain our residents. What else can we do as a town to come together to set aside other funding?
Well, keep in mind, again, that there are some funds at the state for that type of thing, up to three thousand, so, you know, definitely explore that. And depending on the program, I don't know all the, you know, ARPA is generally more flexible. Um, if we did more ARPA dollars, I would like it to not, we, the current funding is tied to COVID-related. If we did more funding, I would like it not tie, you know, have it be more flexible, so we could do more with it, so.
All right, so we're not sure that we can work to allocate any additional funds to support folks on our own level?
Well, I'm saying that, that I am supportive.
So we'd have to be a motion from the council, or from the RTM, or how do we say, hey, you know what? How much is in our, how much is in our general, or how much is in our fund account right now?
Well, again, we have ARPA already available, so, you know, that would be the request. Town council would have to approve it, and then we'll come back to the RTM for approval.
And we got eight point four million dollars in ARPA fund, and only three hundred thousand has been allocated to rent assistance and, and heating and things like that. With the additional fifty tonight, if you guys approve it, would bring it to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of eight point four million dollars. So, um, I just think, but we can as a town. How much is in our general fund or extra fund day balance right now?
Uh, approximately, right about thirty million. We're just over the twenty percent mark, which keeps our, when we, when we issue bonds to build, like the school bonds we have right now, and we just are selling bonds again this week. To keep your rating up, you have to stay pretty close to the twenty percent, so you don't have a lot of flexibility. We are using, we use any excess every year to offset the property tax increase. We have four billion scheduled for this year. So that's, we always try to eat that down and keep it at where it needs to be.
But we also could allocate a line within our own budget that says human resources, where every year in our budget, we could be saying a hundred thousand is gonna be allocated to heat, food assistance, and, and, and housing, couldn't we?
Certainly. Right now, like I said, I established a fund in the new budget, starting with thirty thousand. That'll be up to the council what they do with that.
Thank you.
Before I recognize Representative Dutton, Representative O'Bri, um, the ARPA funds that have been expended throughout the town, eight-plus million, were all approved by the town council. Is that correct?
And RTM.
And the RTM, thank you.
Now, some is in reserve. We haven't actually spent it all yet. Uh, one of the, one of the fiduciary duties we have is for roads type of things in the city. We have one point four of that set aside for the seawall. They obtained, uh, seven point, two point seven million from the state. I believe it's about a four billion dollar project, so we have that set aside. The Groton Housing Authority, we have about eight, just under eight hundred thousand set aside, so there are some, it's not all, but there are other things out there.
Thank you. All right, Representative Dutton, followed by Representative O'Bri.
Cool. Could I just, everybody just take a deep breath right now and just say, go Huskies? Because that's a bipartisan issue, and I'm serious. Like, that's why I'm representing tonight, and the women were robbed. But like, seriously, my question is, you mentioned that this fifty thousand is COVID leftovers. Um, and I'm, oh, sorry, and, well, I.
If you don't mind, please stand in so that everybody can see you speak.
I'm just trying to say, I hate microphones. I, I speak really loudly. It'll be recorded. Um, my question is, if this is COVID leftover money, and I can tell you, since I teach every day, and apparently the pandemic didn't happen, but it happened to my students, how do we at least ensure that the fifty thousand works? I mean, what, that, that's what I don't understand, because there seem to be all of these little pieces of the COVID money that everybody, you know, we all read the newspapers, and people keep getting arrested for misusing their COVID funds. None of us wants to do that. So how do we at least get fifty thousand to work? Because I actually, I, I'm sorry, I just don't even understand how to game the system legally. But if it's COVID that saves people's, I, when I hear about graduating seniors gonna be evicted so that they can't graduate, that's not cool. But if that's the truth, like, work with me on that one, please. Thank you.
And I should mention that I know Superintendent Austin has been in the loop and guaranteed they'll work with any families. I think she said they have three potential families that have kids and that might be affected. But she said they'll do everything they can to work to make sure they can finish up school year. And again, once you work legal counsel, you should be able to buy some time. Um, in terms of, uh, uh, Human Services has, has a long track record of, of distributing these type of funds. They intake certain information. They track it. I get spreadsheets of what, what all they're spending, anything over. I think it's two thousand through ARPA dollars, uh, comes to me for approval, so I can see what the request is, whether it makes sense. So it's pretty well tracked, and they've done a great job of distributing. We've tried to get that money out there. We've tried to be very flexible, um, you know, to help people. And that's what they'll continue to do, so.
Can I just follow up? Just really, really quickly, when you say really flexible, how does a family that doesn't know what that terminology means follow up correctly so that they get that money?
If they just call Human Services, they'll guide you through the process. That, I think I have the number here. Give me a moment somewhere here. Of course, I just, this place is messed up. Just a second, just about there. The phone number is eight, is eight six zero four four one six six seven zero. You just look up Groton, uh, Human Services. They'll lead you through the process. Uh, they're very good, and will explain everything, uh, to you. Basically, you can make a connection on how you may have been hurt by COVID. They'll work with you.
Sorry, can I ask a follow-up? I had their numbers, six seven six zero. Can you confirm it's six six seven zero?
Well, maybe just different offices there, too.
Representative O'Bri?
I just wanna say that I think that, um, if a counselor wants to talk to the town manager, I think it's appropriate at your own meeting. And I get upset when you take our time for your questions interfering with an RTM meeting. Portia, I'm gonna ask you not to do it. Let us.
I call point of order. I'm here representing the people. I ask for decorum. I'm here tonight giving a midnight to support my rights.
Excuse me. Folks, Representative O'Bri, Representative, uh, Town Counselor Bordelon, if we can leave the decorum aside. We're trying to hold a meeting so we can do the town's business right now. Thank you.
Are you asking me to sit down?
I'm, I'm just asking you to keep the decorum, please. Thank you.
Absolutely. I think the RTM will ask the appropriate questions. If somebody wants a question asked, they could certainly email us all, ask it to be a question, uh, an information point. There's a way to do it that doesn't take time away from us, and I don't wanna take a time away either, but I think it's abused. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have to mention that our current thirty-fourth rules do allow for ex officios to be heard. Um, but I will ask that we keep it on the topic at hand and keep our agenda moving forward, please. Thank you. Representative Perry?
I'm a District One, um, member, and, um, Representative Bordelon was asked to come to tonight's meeting. I think we need to be heard. I think this is being dismissed. What we're talking about, I, I hear some of us are listening, but to, that was very disrespectful.
Representative Perry, I'm gonna ask you the same thing. We're, right now, we're on Agenda Item for, uh, Town Manager. So if we can keep it focused on the questions for the Town Manager right now, that'd be great.
Well, these questions for the Town Manager.
Thank you.
You keep saying the COVID money that we set aside at Human Service Resources. You keep saying the COVID money that we set aside at Human Services Resources.
Right. Services, Human Services.
This is not a COVID situation.
Oftentimes, though, in the past, you know, even if you showed how you lost them in COVID four and don't have the money to move, that type of thing, there just has to be some tenuous connection in the past somewhere.
Okay. And I was also told, because I'm a part of that community, and I went to the first meeting that Ivy Court had and heard a lot of what they're going through. Some people have gone through Human Services, and were told they were overqualified. They've been to Unite CT and said they were overqualified. As we heard, we're not... They're not prepared to come out of their pockets with 4,000 or 5,000 at this time. What do we do?
If you hear that, if you... First of all, for state, Unite CT, I would talk to Representative Conley, one of the upper representatives, because they can go through the Housing Commissioner, who has access, ready access to those funds. They can help with that. And then, not knowing particulars, but feel free to email me or call me, and I'll help you work through things.
I will. I will.
Any other questions for the town manager? Representative Norman?
Sorry, for those of us who are step behind with what's going on with Ivy Court, is there an approved, like a planning and zoning approved... Oh, sorry. Is there a planning and zoning approved development right now?
Nothing's been received to date.
Okay.
Right now, it's just a private sale.
So there's nothing we can do because this is happening separate?
It's a private sale at this point, yeah.
Okay.
Before I get second-time speakers, any other first-time speakers of the RTM that would like to speak? Okay, Representative Perry?
All right. So let me give a little clarification. I'm not sure how many families this affects, but 20 families were given a 30-day notice. We have maybe 50 more families who are just sitting and waiting to receive these notices. In the meantime, Navy Housing has shut us off to apply for that type of housing. And as we said earlier, there is no housing. Branford Manor, I heard, they're packed. There's nothing, nothing over there. Groton Estates, very few. There's just nowhere for these families to go. What we are asking for is, we need help to give us time. That's all. We were... We have the option. If we have the option to increase on the rents, fine. We need the time.
And that's why it's very important to make sure you get legal, the free legal aid, if you need it. There are several sources for that.
As Town Manager Burt put up on the screen, and I believe that's on the website now for the Town of Groton website.
Correct.
CT, Unite CT would be that assistance mechanism, as well as statewide legal services. They have offices all over the state. You could find out and access them, as well as contacting 800-842-8267. State Representative Conley has been quite helpful in this situation to lead people in those directions right now. Representative Bordalon.
I'm Councilor Bordalon.
Councilor Bordalon, one of the things that could help to the town manager possibly, I don't know. I don't know. I'll ask the folks here, would be to bring those services to the Human Services so folks don't have to travel. One of the things, when you're going through a crisis, that people need is someone to lean on, and they need the help and the guidance when they're looking for, you know, they're overwhelmed and trying to get this. So I know when we were doing, trying to get the money during COVID, they had that portable thing that came around. Maybe we can set up a couple nights or a couple days at one of our sites and have people come to the senior center, all of these agencies right here for the people. That would be something we could do at no cost, but just arrange it for them, if possible, I guess, to the town manager. Because that's what I'm hearing. It's hard to call all these places and wait online. Maybe we can bring the resources to them here and have a couple days set up. Would be helpful. And I can send that up with an email as well.
Any other questions for the town manager? Representative Fritchie, before I go to second-time hands, you have the floor, sir.
Is this on?
Yes.
I'm reading all across the country that the exodus of people into another community is creating huge problems. There was a link to an article in Colorado, in Denver area, where it was in New York Times about how severe it is. This whole issue of a shortage of housing in places didn't exist for 10 years, from 2008 and the crash all the way until 2021, when we had this exodus begin. So we're looking at something that's an oddball thing, but it's also happening everywhere. And it's really not fair that for Groton to sit there and say, "We are alone, you know, and we have to deal with these problems." Whereas, you know, there are other solutions, and the state should be leading it. Yes, we have problems, but there... We're sort of... It takes time to create the resources for people to use. I saw the big buildings today riding around that's going up, you know, right down by the bridge and so forth. But it's not going to happen overnight, and the state needs to get involved. Because there are also places where they have available opportunities that may not be in Groton that you can go to, that aren't... Maybe they aren't happy with that idea, but there's got to be a solution somewhere. There has to be a place where they can go if they're going to let these private guys come in, buy land, kick people out, run the prices up. And this is going on everywhere.
I'm going to, again, recognize first-time hands before second-time hands. Representative O'Bree, so Representative Kaden.
Just a quick clarifying question. I heard the term eviction used. Can you clarify, are these folks being evicted?
As far as I know, people have not received the eviction notice yet, have they? The notice to quit, but not the...
Notice to quit, but no eviction.
Correct. That's my understanding. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay. Any other first-time hands before I recognize Representative O'Bree? Representative O'Bree, questions regarding town manager's report and financial report?
Well, not really. I just wanted to say I feel terrible about what's happening. And I would be more than happy to work with the manager and whoever else might be appropriate to set up a meeting here to talk to you about financial opportunities to buy. I sell real estate. I'm not doing it for my own endeavor. I'm doing it to educate, because there are an enormous amount of programs right now that make it where you can be into a home with no money. And I think this might be an opportunity for some of the people to buy a home. And so if I can, I'll bring in the appropriate people to talk with you, and I'll do anything that I can to help you. Because I think it's just... Tonight, when I came to the meeting, and we had our meeting before, this is what I brought up, the fact that I felt terrible about what was happening, and I was hoping we would be able to do something to help. So I offered to do that if I can help the manager, do that if anybody wants to come and learn a little bit more about what you might be able to do. Just one example is, right now, if you're a first-time buyer, the state gives you $25,000. You can use that for your down payment, your closing costs, put money towards the note. I mean, it's your choice. And there's several programs where it's zero money. CHFA is phenomenal. It's a great program. It's a lower interest rate. They're more liberal when they qualify people. They will lend you the money for the house. They will lend you the money for your down payment, and they will lend you the money for your closing costs. So there are opportunities. And if I can help educate some of the people and bring in the appropriate people to talk with you, I'm more than happy to do it. So I'll leave that in John's hands.
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to mention, Representative Norman, you are correct. I had the wrong number. So let me correct that. I swapped two numbers. I double-checked. It's 860-441-6760. The other went to a different division.
So if any members of the community need assistance through Groton Human Services, 860-441-6760. Thank you. Rep. Norman, go ahead.
I also want to generally say when we're talking about national issues, as well as what it means to be local, there are a lot of local communities, as well as national, who are thinking about putting additional sort of taxes or fees on corporate multi-property landowners. So for example, there are bills in place that say for every corporation that owns over a certain threshold of number of properties, they have to pay an additional $10,000 a year fee that goes into a housing trust that supports other families. I think if we are going to encounter this and we don't have other ways to cut it off, those kinds of understanding that we're going to value and prioritize our neighborhoods can make people think twice before they come in and buy it up. Because $10,000 per each of these households would be a lot of additional money that someone has to put in, but also a lot of additional help for folks who are getting affected by it.
Thank you. Any other questions for the town manager? All right, moving on. Economic Development, I believe we had a report last month from John Ryder, and it was, and again, a great report. If you haven't seen it, RTM, take a look at our last meeting. It was very thorough on what's happening in Groton as it relates to economic development and potential for the future. So I'm going to move along here. I did not receive notification from the Superintendent of Schools, but Superintendent Austin is not here with us. I just clear... Just to be clear, I know we have our budget season coming up, so I'm going to mention this to you now. If you have questions regarding the education budget, please get those questions to myself or Town Manager Burt and Superintendent Austin, even Chair Whiteluff of the Board of Education. They could answer those questions for you prior to the meeting, so we can have swift and efficient budget discussions. All right, moving along. Community Development and Services, you did not have any report, right, Chair Casper? No report. Chair Whitney is not here, so I will say no report. Finance, I'm going to recognize Finance Chair Powers S., so he can deliver his report on the special meeting they had yesterday.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yesterday, last evening, we had a finance meeting. It was a special meeting to go through four grants. The meeting was called to order at 7:04. The roll call was Representatives Dean Shinra, Norman Gardner, Pulaski, Powers, and Umraz. Representative Fritchie was excused. He had another commitment. Also present was the ECD grant writer, Megan Granato, the Board of Education Food Supervisor, who's here tonight, Ernie Cosmider, and the Human Resources Director, Marge Fondulas, was with us online. Our first item of business was 2024-320, the Community Challenge Grant Award. It's round two. Resolution was read into the record by Representative Norman, and it was seconded by Representative Pulaski. Our discussion was as follows. ECD Director Granato explained the funding, the different categories to accepting the grant, the process and the background to receiving the state economic and community development funding, the town ECD meeting with the state for a number of different years, actually, for the size of this project. The committee asked about the funding sources and discussed any obligation the town would have to pay for this grant. The package of documents were explained, which all of us got before our meeting. Chairman Powers asked for a vote. Six in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. So that resolution passed. Like, Representative Norman, if she doesn't mind to read into the record that whole piece for me, that would be great.
I have it. Here we go. From the beginning, issue. You want the whole thing?
Please.
Okay. The State of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development, DECD, released a notice of funding availability to initiate round two of the Connecticut Communities' Challenge Grant Program in 2022. The Town of Groton applied and received $6,465,000 in grant funding. The award was based upon the proposal Shovel Readiness Capital Stack of Private and Nonstate Public Investments, applicant team, experience, and opportunities for economic and community impacts. The Office of Planning and Development Services, OPDS, pursued opportunities to leverage Connecticut Communities' Challenge Funds to enhance shovel-ready private development opportunities and public investments to improve multimodal access and infrastructure that can support future population and business growth. Grant funding is for the addition of 51 new affordable housing units at Grosso Gardens under Groton Housing Authority, sidewalk improvements along Fort Hill Road, east-west bike path, Paquannic River boardwalk improvements and upgrades, a Paquannic River pedestrian bridge and sidewalk improvements. Background, the Communities' Challenge Round One cycle closed in late 2021, and the Department of Economic and Community Development announced $45 million in awards for 12 projects in April 2022. DECD allocated the remaining $55 million program balance toward round two awards. OPDS understood the process to develop a competitive application would require significant staff time and sought buy-in from the town council to approach potential partners and move forward with building a competitive project proposal. This method was effective in securing one of the largest community challenge grants in Connecticut. Office of Planning and Development Services, OPDS, staff targeted the Paquannic Bridge Village District Route One corridor due to the recently completed developments and pipeline projects along that corridor. These projects provided an appealing node of shovel-ready projects and investments which were leveraged to satisfy the grant's match requirement. OPDS staff focused on Route One to identify project areas due to the corridor's role as a major thoroughfare, with momentum from recently completed housing and retail development successes. At the town council's direction, OPDS staff convened a working group to document completed and in-progress public and private investments along the corridor, organized key data points and maps of nearby assets, and engaged existing business stakeholders and property owners on the availability of community challenge funds. The working group also compiled a list of FYE 2022 and 2023 budget allocations connected to the Route One corridor in order to document the public infrastructure and mobility improvements that could be leveraged towards the application's local match requirement. Once approved by the town council at their meeting on September 6, 2022, the grant application was submitted to the state by the deadline of October 7, 2022. Groton received a finalized grant award notification in 2023 after significant conversations with DECD. Project refinements and preparation for grant closing between Groton and DECD has been ongoing for months. Motion to accept the Connecticut Communities' Challenge Round Two grant in the amount of $6,465,000.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion was moved by Representative Norman, seconded by Powers S. And the challenge grant, again, just for the numbers, is $6,465,000.
Rep. Planning and Zoning Director John Reiner is with us tonight, so if we have any questions, he said he'd be available to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Powers. Are there any questions or discussion on this item? Yes, Representative Kaden.
Will any families be displaced by this development?
Did you hear that?
Mr. Reiner, did you hear that question?
Yeah, I heard that. Not that I'm aware of. So the 51 units that the Housing Authority... So, good evening, everyone. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development. The 51 units that will be constructed, this new affordable housing at Grosso Gardens, will be on a vacant piece of property right now. And then the other improvements are more public infrastructure improvements, again, biteways, sidewalks, pedestrian bridges. So we don't see any use of any existing, you know, housing units for that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? Representative O'Bree? If you're able, yes.
I'm sorry. Does that include the improvements that are being done to the units that now exist?
That is a different project. That's different grant funding. That is not this project.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion on the main motion on the floor? Any other discussion on the main motion on the floor? Yes, Representative Norman.
Does accepting these funds speed the build of the affordable housing?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? Does the acceptance of these funds?
Would that speed along the actual completion of the building of the affordable housing?
We hope that it will. We do not have an application yet from the Groton Housing Authority for that building, for that construction, but we hope that accepting these funds will help get them moving along and get that project moving.
And John, I believe the state are pretty emphatic. They need this, they need the final approval. So if we don't do it, it's going to collapse.
Yeah, we're still working through the final paperwork. It's, it's really been a bear, the agreements between the town and the state, just trying to get that all finalized.
Any other discussion? Okay. Let me just make sure I get this number right. All those in favor of item 2024-320, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? All right, motion passes unanimously. We have 25 to zero to zero. Thank you. All right, on to the next one, please.
Our next item was 2024-206-3, the Groton Public School Connecticut Grown for Kids Grant. Resolution was read into the record by Representative Umraz, seconded by Representative Norman. Our discussion basically coordinator Cosmider explained to the community that this program is a hydroponic growing center. It's installed at the Thames River Elementary School for children. There will be a hands-on curriculum and it deals with the environment and there will be a biology teacher to instruct students, if I'm not mistaken from our meeting. This grant will cover, I think, 18 months of this. Coordinator Cosmider further discussed how the hourly contract was paid. The committee asked various questions on sustainability and the importance of teaching our youth on agriculture and food growing process. Ernie's here to answer any of our questions. I'll ask you to come up, if you don't mind, and sit with Manager Burt.
Representative Powers, are we able to get the motion on the floor first?
Oh, yeah. I make a motion to accept the grant.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, motion is moved by Powers S., seconded by Barrell for 2024-206 in the amount of $250,000. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. All right, open the floor for discussion and can you just, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name at the beginning.
Good evening, folks. My name is Ernie Koschmeter and I'm the food service director for Groton Public Schools.
I should read this in, shouldn't I, John Claude?
Would be helpful.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right, we're going to back up real quick.
Yeah, I'm going to back up real quick. The resolution approving the Connecticut Grown for Kids, Connecticut Kids Grant is in the amount of $250,000 for the Groton Board of Ed, whereas the Groton Board of Education applied for and was awarded a Connecticut Grown for Kids grant by the State Department of Agriculture in the amount of $250,000 with a grant period of 24 months. And whereas the Groton Board of Education plans to utilize the funds to construct and install a 40-foot by 8-foot self-contained hydroponic center adjacent to the Thames River Elementary School, and whereas the grant funding will also include the salary for a farm-to-school educational coordinator that will provide hands-on curriculum in biology and environmental science to students, and whereas the center will be used to grow year-round fresh produce for students and their families using simplified hydroponics. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council authorizes town manager John Burt to act on behalf of the Town of Groton to execute any and all documents and to perform all acts and things deemed necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of the grant program, to accept the grant in the amount of $250,000, and to refer the item to the RTM per rule 6.5.3. I so move.
Second.
All right, let's switch that up now. Powers S. and Adams, second. All right, now we open up for discussion.
Sorry.
We're all human, then.
I know. It's late.
Okay, I turn over the floor to you if anybody has any questions regarding this grant. Yes?
I don't have any questions. I just, as somebody who worked extensively on securing the NOANC public, the former NOANC Elementary School property as the NOANC Public Gardens, this is a fantastic idea. It's also a way to connect Groton through these kinds of programs and I wholeheartedly endorse this program and encourage the Thames River Project to work with the NOANC unity on this.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on item 2024-206, Groton Public School CT Grown for Kids Grant in the amount of $250,000. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? All right, motion carries. 25 in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, do we have any more, sir?
Yes, we do.
I think we do.
We have two more to go.
Yes, sir.
2024-234-3, American Rescue Plan Human Services Allocation. The resolution was read into the record by Representative Pulaski, seconded by Norman. The discussion was involved with Human Resources Director Fondulus discussing the funding allotments and the process for disbursement of money. The program has assisted 250-plus families and approximately 240,000 went just for rent and 60,000 for utilities. The fund balances at the time last night was 1,300 and it's gone down since. And this 50,000 will bring our town ARPA funding to approximately 110,000, which it changes all the time because the money goes out. The committee asked a variety of different programs about disbursement questions, about the requirements to receive funds. Chairman Powers called for a vote. Six in favor, zero opposed, zero abstention. So I'll read this into the record.
Please do.
Resolution endorsing the acceptance of grant for the children in Nature, no, that's the wrong one, sorry. I'm ahead of myself again.
Two, three, four.
Yep, yep. Too many papers, sorry. Resolution to approve 50,000 be allocated from the American Rescue Plan Act Fund to the Human Services Department, whereas the Town of Groton was the recipient of federal funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA of 2021, Public Law 117-2 of 2021, and whereas the town has received $8,587,894.04 in funds and previously awarded $300,000 to the Human Services Department to assist residents financially impacted by the COVID pandemic, and whereas 160,000 is still available in the town's ARPA fund, and whereas the Human Services Department ARPA fund is currently, it says at 25, and we found out that it was at 1,300. Whereas the staff still sees the negative financial impact of COVID has left on residents being able to manage the basic necessities, now therefore be it resolved that the town council approves 50,000 be allocated from the American Rescue Plan Fund to the Human Services Department to be utilized for mortgage rent payments and utilized for those that are having been financially impacted by COVID pandemic and to refer the item to the RTM per rule 6.5.3. I so move.
All right, motion was moved by Powers S., seconded by Pulaski for item 2024-234, American Rescue Plan Act Human Service Allocation. I open the floor for discussion and we have.
Director Fondulus is with us.
We have her iPhone on there if anybody has any questions regarding this allocation. Seeing no discussion on this, I'll call for a vote on item 2024-234 in the amount of $50,000. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. 25 in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions.
Last item of business, 2024-257-3, Nature Everywhere Grant. The resolution was read into the record by Representative Norman, seconded by Powers. ECD Director, Grant Writer Granado explained the grant program as explained in our package. The committee discussed a variety of groups, this impacts, the hiring of employees for the program, the two-year planning process and seed money, and the competitive grants for which this will fund. The Parks and Rec Department is a lead department. The benefits to the community youth and the committee members agree that this is, this will improve the quality of life for our youth. Chairman Powers called for a vote. Representative Shinrock was off, so it was five in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. The motion passed. I'll read the resolution. Resolution endorsing the acceptance of grants from the Children and Nature Network for seed funding to begin the Nature Everywhere process in Groton. Whereas the Nature Everywhere program is a partnership between the children and Nature Network, the National League of Cities, and Kaboom, designed to increase equitable access to nature everywhere children live, learn, and play. And whereas this program was developed in response to a growing body of research showing how children physically and mentally benefit from spending time in nature such as reduced risk of obesity, better academic performance, relationship skills, and improved behavior. And whereas the Children and Nature Network commit to working with 100 communities by 2025 and issued a solicitation for new communities in the summer of 2023, seeking across sectorial teams committed to making progress on this subject in their towns and cities. And whereas Groton Public School applied on behalf of a team from Groton, which was one of the 19 teams selected across the country in September 2023, the Go Get Outdoors Groton Team is comprised of the Groton Public Schools, the Town of Groton Office and Planning and Development Services, the Town's Park and Rec Department, and the Groton Open Space Association. And whereas Go Groton will develop a nature equity plan for Groton's youth over the next two years, utilizing technical assistance from national experts from the Nature Everywhere program as well as 40,000 of seed funding from the program partners to conduct the planning process. Planning process will examine structural changes needed to ensure equitable nature access from the physical presence of green space throughout the town to policies and programs that influence how children and which children interact with nature. And whereas the team recommended that the Town of Groton dedicate the 40,000 of seed funding to provide additional capacities to conduct extensive community engagement by hiring three or three to four temporary positions, one Go Groton organizer, one Go Groton youth organizer, and one to three youth leaders. The youth organizer position is intended for a graduate-level student with the youth leaders to be local high school students. And whereas the people hired for these positions will work from 12 to 15 months planning and facilitating community engagement strategies, utilizing various communication methods to connect with youth. Community members and organizations engage these groups in the planning process and collect information and feedback gathered from the community engagement process to form recommendations and proposals to the Go Groton Team, Team Leaders, and Stakeholders. Once the two-year planning process is complete, the team will be able to apply for competitive grants through the project partners and other sources for plan implementation. And whereas based on the intended use of these seed funding and administrative capacity, the Town of Groton Parks and Rec Department will accept and manage the funds, supervise and pay the youth organizers and the youth leaders. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council authorizes the town manager John Burt to execute all required documents for the Nature Everywhere Grant, accepting the grant funding in the amount of 40,000 for seed funding and refer the matter to the RTM per rule 6.5.3. So move.
All right, moved by Powers S., seconded by Norman. Item 2024-257, Nature Everywhere Grant in the amount of $40,000. I open up the floor for discussion on this item.
And we do have John Reiner still for questions.
Okay. Questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on item 2024-257, Nature Everywhere Grant in the amount of $40,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. All right, motion carries. 25, 0, 0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner, and thank you, Representative Powers and the Finance Committee for getting those items moved through. Thank you so much. All right, public safety, no committee, no report. All right, public works chair is not here, so no committee, no report. Rep. Watson, no committee, no report for both items, correct? Rules and procedures and recreation? Sounds good? All right, thank you. Are there any liaison reports? Yes, Representative Wells, you have golf updates.
Well, it's a circumstance of no meeting, but I have a report.
Okay.
They canceled the meeting due to lack of quorum. However, we do have the golf course reports and a lot of numbers. I've got to hold this up. We can report that February's fiscal year-to-date revenues are a 13% increase over the prior fiscal year-to-date and a 23% increase over the prior four years fiscal year-to-date. This follows January's 13% and 21% increases and followed by March's 11% and 19% increases. So I think we could say is Shenny doing better than it was four years ago? It is doing better.
Well done. Thank you, Representative Wells. Are there any other liaison reports? All right. Moving on, budget discussions. Real quick, we just got a reminder, there's 17 budget books to pick up down at Town Hall. If you have not picked up your budget book, Harry, I got your book. Please pick them up, okay? It's coming right up around the corner. As I've stated at multiple meetings already, the town council has been deliberating and making decisions on some budget items. If it is involved in your committee, please look into those items. Also, as I just mentioned, I'm going to call you out one more time. Community Development Service Chair, we're trying to schedule your meeting. I'll try to reach out and you will as well to Rep. Whitney, who's in charge of education of set dates, and Public Safety Chair Barrell, if you could reach out to Town Park's office to schedule those meetings. Toot sweet. Thank you very much. All right, any other budget discussions? Again, like I said before, if there's questions, please forward them ahead of time. I, you know, respect the individuals that have already reached out to me or the town manager to ask some pertinent questions so that we can expedite the process when it becomes our turn coming up very shortly. Any other budget discussions? All right, we got other business. Any other other business? I'm sorry, I cannot recognize you. You are not a member of this committee. Thank you.
Ex officio of Board of Ed.
You are not an ex officio. The only ex officio member, if you read the rules, is the chair. Thank you. Any other other discussion? All right, we'll move on to item M. Call for a meeting to adjourn. All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, we are adjourned.